Good evening. This is the Norwood Planning Board. We're meeting here at Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street, Room 12. It's April 8th, 2019. We're being covered by, recorded by Norwood Public.
Community Media.
Norwood Community Media.
Norwood Community Media. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes from 3:26, 2019. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? Any comments or questions regarding that? Any corrections?
No.
No? I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? That's a 4-0. Minutes are approved.
I think somebody's coming down. This might be Al.
It's Al.
Perfect timing. Good evening, Al. The next order of business is the Planning Board reorganization. Do I hear any? What anyone would like to do as far as a new chairman?
Well, I would like to propose a new chairman and vice chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to nominate Ernie Pachakowski for chairman and yourself as vice chairman. I am unable to fulfill that requirement for this coming year as normally we do the rotation.
Traditionally, that would be the case, yes.
Yeah. I got a lot of things going on medically with my wife and I don't want to take the position and not be able to serve the board.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's my motion.
Okay. Well, we should have.
Who's up for reelection next year?
Al is, is that correct?
Yeah.
Al would be up for reelection.
So Al normally would, by tradition, even fall to Al. Now, the way we would usually do this would be to take nominations. Any other nominations at this time? We also have to have a clerk. So I just want to, would you like to, anyone interested in being clerk if that is the, if Ernie would be the?
You want to be the clerk? You want me to be the clerk?
Go for it.
Wow, I didn't get out of the room fast enough.
Al, would you like to make that part of your motion?
I would. I'd like to annex that, name Ms. Homewood as clerk as well.
That, that sounds good. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Yeah, I can't second that for you, sorry.
Any further discussion on that?
Nope.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Ernie, I can hand this right over to you now.
I have a copy. I'll stay right where I am.
Here you go.
Thank you, thank you, Al, and hopefully situations will get better in your private matters so that you can take the helm next time around. Okay, so up to this point now, all we've done is just approval of the minutes. Okay, we've done Planning Board reorganization. Okay, it's 7:10, we're right on time. We're going to have a discussion with the Skating Club of Boston. We have some off-site parking issues. Thomas Fanning, North Star, Douglas, and I'm going to get this name wrong, so.
Zeghype.
Zeghype, the Skating Club of Boston. So if one of you gentlemen or both you gentlemen want to come up to the table or you can stay where you are and, so, but first I'm just going to ask Paul to just kind of fill the board in on why we're here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a series of conditions of approval that were put into place at the time the Planning Board approved the major project special permit. And those conditions were kind of grouped together in different categories and there was a group of conditions that have to be met prior to the start of construction. We received a call from the contractor who was ready to start on the project and informed him that we needed to get evidence that all those conditions had been satisfied. So just about everything was in except for two things. One is an easement or easements for the utilities to provide the town access to the water and sewer utilities, electric if they're on their property, that would allow the town to do maintenance as needed in the event of a problem. And we did not receive copies of the easement documents. But the condition that is more concerning to me relates to the requirement to provide an off-site parking agreement for their special events. The board will recall that their projection on parking demand was that during the normal day-to-day activities, at the very most, they would need 400 parking spaces on-site and that would handle, I think, some small events. But the larger events, which they told us would probably be between six and eight a year, they will need additional parking. The zoning bylaw required 500 additional parking spaces to meet the parking requirements for the facility. And so what we recalled during our, the hearing process was representation that they would talk to the neighboring property owners and try to secure written parking agreements for the six or eight times a year when they have their special events. The board saw this as a, as a good compromise. We did not want to see an additional 500 parking spaces constructed on-site because of the environmental issues associated with clearing and grading and the site does have, you know, flood plain in the back and it just didn't make sense. And so the board voted to grant a waiver to not construct these 500 spaces. But that was with the understanding that the applicant would be able to, the skating club would be able to present us with some binding written agreements saying that, you know, on certain events, they would be able to work out a deal where they could park cars and shuttle people over. So what we received to comply with that condition of approval was a parking agreement with the MBTA. And the first copy that we received wasn't signed by the T. And that was rectified today when we received a signed version of the agreement.
That's the one that was handed out tonight?
Yeah.
Everybody?
But it doesn't have his signature.
So the one that they handed out tonight?
The one tonight.
What sign?
This is the one I got tonight.
Oh.
No, I'm mixing them up.
So now we do have a signed agreement, which is a good thing. However, one of the, I reviewed the memorandum of understanding with the T. And recital number seven, at the bottom of the page, states that the MBTA has indicated that we'll consider a license application for the loading and unloading of skating club provided private shuttle bus service to, at the MBTA.
Areas on base?
Areas on the commuter needs are likely to be lower than normal. So this was, this was indicating that they would consider granting a license to allow people attending special events to park at the Westwood Rail Station. But the words that they would consider a license application, in my mind, fell short of a binding agreement that would satisfy what we need from the skating club. I met with Tom Fanning and with Dan Givoni to discuss this. Pat and I met and discussed this with them last week. And what Tom had mentioned was that along with this, they had offered at the time during the permitting process that the town would enter into a memorandum of understanding with the skating club that would lay out how things will operate during the six or eight times a year that they have special events. And so the memorandum of understanding initially said that they would, you know, submit one of these parking plans that would, that would cover the year and they would submit it to the planning department and we would work with coordinating the parking program for the special events. And so I had talked to Tony Mazuko about this and said, I don't think that this is really falls within, you know, the scope of what my job is and that it made more sense for, for the general manager to be the one that signs off on this memorandum of understanding and that coordinating that process with the police department, the fire department, the building department and public works if needed for handling the bigger events. I took some of the language from this memorandum of understanding and incorporated it into the, into a condition of approval for the project. However, we set this aside and thought we'd finalize it later. Tom contended, and he can follow up on this, that, that this says that they can't have a, have a special event until the town signed off on their parking agreement. So he feels that this essentially covers them and provides the town with assurance that there won't be a special event until the town approves this. I told him that, that that condition of approval that required guaranteeing a parking agreement prior to the start of construction was important and it's a condition that I don't have the authority to waive and that I wouldn't waive it. When I discussed this with the building inspector during the permitting process, because there was resistance to this condition during the permitting process, he said to me, Paul, what if they build this huge facility and they still don't have the parking locked in? You know, then what are we going to tell them? They can't have a certificate of occupancy. And, you know, we discussed it and he's like, get this, you know, before they start construction, let's iron this all out. And so, you know, I indicated to Tom that they got the biggest parking waiver in the history of the town. No one's ever had 500 spaces waived. And, you know, why didn't they get this taken care of? In that discussion, you know, he told me that they hadn't really talked to the owners up and down University Ave yet. And so at that point, we decided the best thing to do would be to have them come in and talk to the board and get the board's reaction to how this should be handled. The contractors are ready to go. They've started to move equipment to the site and they're eager to start construction. And so unfortunately, we've got a situation now that we need to resolve.
So what do we have? Mr. Fanning, if you want to kind of give us your take on this?
Sure. First, congratulations on your new chairman.
Oh, thanks.
That comes with a pay raise.
Yeah.
Double.
Double. Two times zero. So I think Paul has stated that pretty well. I just wanted to offer a little bit of color. I do think condition 10, which it says, honestly, I think there's an honest miscommunication on condition 10. The applicant shall provide suitable replacement utility easements. The confusion on our side, to be completely frank, is there were no existing utility easements that the town benefit from. I, we, Dan and I thought this was literally a, like a pro forma condition that are in all your permits. So there's not a, there's a willingness to work with everyone and resolve this. We've reached out to Mark. Mark wasn't exactly sure what he wanted. He said he needed to talk to you. So we're not pushing back on the requirement to furnish town access to their easements. There were no existing easements. We thought this was just a template condition. So we can resolve this. It's in our interest, obviously, for you folks to have access to the easements you're furnishing to the building. We don't dispute that. So we did not push it because we didn't think it was a requirement, to put it simply.
That's not our problem one, though, right?
No, I think that's, that's more of a minor one, to be frank. But I wanted to just give you the color.
Let's hear him talk about the parking.
Yep.
Okay.
Before we ask questions. Yep. So that's 10. And then obviously, the more significant one, to your point, Debbie, is, is the off-site parking. We have an agreement with the T. I don't, you know, respectfully, I don't disagree with Paul's interpretation of it. I think we've worked in good faith with the T. We've had multiple calls with the T. The T has expressed interest in doing this. But the T wants to know when the events are. And then they're going to get more specific and granular with us. I think that what we're finding about this condition is this building, these events are 24 months from now, the first one. So when you, whether you're approaching people on University Ave or approaching the T, all the T says, when are your events? We said nights and weekends. They're like, great, the garage is empty. We'd love to lease you some spaces. They signed an agreement, took us a lot of work to get them to that point. I don't disagree with Paul's assessment of it. The language is a little soft in terms of there being an absolute guarantee that they will. But it is a public garage. So what we're really talking about this in the agreement is the ability for the club to run shuttles through that little ground floor pickup area. That is, that's the essence of that agreement. People, the T cannot prohibit Doug's patrons from parking at the garage. And the garage is essentially 80% empty, starting Friday night through, you know, Sunday evening. So we feel like this gets to the spirit of the agreement. Paul's points are not lost to me. He would have preferred to see, I'm in the doghouse a little bit, he would have preferred to see more effort on University Ave. We have since identified all the University Ave. We've started that outreach program, which Doug can update on. The general reaction from people is, yeah, we're interested in helping you. When's your first event? And as soon as you tell them it's two years from now, they're like, yeah, well, come back to us, you know, when you're a little closer. The other thing I, and I'm not, this is not pushback, but the other thing I just want to point out, the, the day-to-day parking needs of the project without a special event are met one and a half times. The parking study we submitted, we have one and a half times the spaces our parking study said we needed. That's for 98% of the days. These events are, are literally maybe four to six events a year. And we feel like we have a mechanism which we've sent and we have a condition that obligates us to perform and generate these things ahead of any event. So we're, we're not unwilling to satisfy this. We're having trouble satisfying it. As, by way of a quick update, Mr. Chairman, the land is purchased. All the loans are closed. The guaranteed maximum price contract mercifully came in on budget. We're locked and loaded. I appreciate that we need to satisfy these two conditions. I'm not arguing that. But we are, we're queued and ready to go and we're trying to, we're here tonight to try and sort through this with it.
As far as condition 10, that, I, that can be between your, your group, Paul and Mark Ryan, I'm sure that that is.
Yeah.
So that's the least of our concern. My concern, and I think a lot of the board members, is, and I'm glad you got the, the signed thing with the T. And my suggestion to the board is that we ask Paul to maybe forward that onto Town Council to look at that agreement and get a, an opinion on him if, if that satisfies what we're looking for. But in all honesty, and I know you're ready to go and, I mean, I, the majority of the board members voted on, on this project, which we all love. One of the, the big issues was parking at the time, that you were, we were waiving 500 parking spaces. And I know your, your numbers say that you've got enough and that's probably true. But one of the big selling points was, and I think the vote was four to one, and I think Al maybe saw through this, maybe smarter than the rest of us at this point. And I know, you know, Robert and I, and was the fact that you were going to get these agreements. You know, that we said, okay, they're going to, they're going to be able to park, you know, at Meditech, you know, next door when they have their event. So the parking would be covered. And I think a lot of us were comfortable with that at the time. And, you know, I, as you understand, did I read this right? That, that under the town, that you want the town to approve the parking plan for all special events? So every time you run a special event, you're going to get a permit from the town and we have to approve it? That's crazy.
Well, that was, but that was a, so we, we suggested that there is.
I mean, in all honesty, we don't want to do that. We don't want to, every time you run a, who's to say what's an event? Who's to say how big an event is? Who's to say, well, you got more people than you thought, so you, you know, I mean, just, we just want to get this taken care of.
Well, I think what we were doing with that is agreeing essentially to be bound that if we couldn't get our act together and get a parking agreement, then we can't get an event. And we were agreeing to be bound by that and we're still agreeing to be bound by that. We're happy to sign that agreement.
You can't get a foundation permit. I mean.
No, no, we've, we've agreed and as, just as a reminder, I mean, the sum and essence of that agreement is already a condition. It's in this, it's in the, they're conditions within our permits.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I think that was one of the things that we discussed with the parking. For those seven, five, eight events, they were going to get a permit through the town. We had already, we had all discussed that.
No, I think it was they were going to get a, they were going to have an agreement to have the off-site parking across the street next.
Each event, they would have to do this because each time, they would have to get approval from whoever, whether it be the town manager in connection, in, together with the, the police and fire.
Oh, okay.
Because each event is different.
We might need details. We might, there's things we need to organize.
If the people crossing the road, they'll have to have a police detail, that kind of thing.
So now it's moved to Tony being the contact instead of the, right?
Yeah, I think Paul felt it better served to be the chief of police.
Town manager.
Yeah, town, general town manager. We crossed out planning and economic development director and we've put in town manager.
Those made, they made those changes. There are two different things here we're talking about.
Right.
Well, part of why we introduce this to Paul is we're having trouble getting people to agree for events or two years out. This isn't a fast one. We're, we're having trouble with a commercial term. We can't get people to satisfy. I appreciate that this is an uncomfortable condition for the board. But we're agreeing to be bound. We're more than happy to sign the parking agreement. We have a letter from the T that is executed. I don't disagree with Paul's assessment of that letter. I'm not here to argue that point with you folks tonight.
So if, if you have an event scheduled for April 20th, 2021, you're going to come to the town.
90 days before.
And 90 days before and you're going to inform us of that.
Yep.
And at that time.
We would have a hard and fast parking agreement.
You would have a hard and fast parking agreement before the town would issue you a permit.
Correct.
As well as a parking plan. And the parking plan would include, depending on where that agreement is and the parking, would there be shuttle service? What would the police details be? And agreeing to follow any requirements by the fire department.
I will grant, I mean, I understand you're two years away from your first event and a lot can happen in two years.
I mean, I think, Mr. Chairman, the one thing, again, I don't want to overstep my bounds. We're not here to argue and.
No, no, we're not. We want to get the source.
Yeah, as do we. I mean, one, one potential ask on our side would be to respectfully request a minor amendment to this agreement that makes it more of a certificate of occupancy obligation because at that point in time, we still can't have events. And we're now four months removed or Doug's early meetings are, you know, within four or five months of the opening. And so that's not a timeline that an, you know, adjacent landowner or landlord, he can say, okay, you know, I know where I am at that point. But right now, we get a lot of people saying, yeah, we'd like to help the club, you know, the club's doing good things, we'd like to help the club. But you're two years out. And we don't know, you know, I, we don't know what we're having for lunch tomorrow. We don't want to talk about anything two years from now. So.
Rob, do you have anything to add to this or how you see it or?
I just know that Al kind of saw it as coming. We also were talking about a traffic study that we all decided to not do. Maybe that was kind of.
It's peer review. So we did do a traffic study, respectfully, but the question was whether there would be a peer review by a third party who represented you folks. But we, we did in fact submit a traffic study. And there was some spirited discourse down the other chambers about whether to get a third party to review that.
It's interesting. The signature here by Evan Rowe, is it?
I have to ask Dan and Al. I'm not sure. Do you know who the signature is?
Evan Rowe.
Director of Revenue for the T. Why is he dealing in the real estate area? They have an outside real estate group that handles all of these things.
Not sure. But I, we did deal.
Is he a member of the board?
No, we, we actually did deal with the folks from their parking services is who we negotiated the agreement with. But my sense is their pay grade did not allow them to sign it. So that gentleman, I believe, is a member of Mark Boyle's real estate team at the T. But I could, I could firm that up for you. He's a legitimate signature on it, I'm sure.
Part of the other thing is, you know, we signed this agreement back in November. And there's been no action on here until March of this year, four months. You didn't think this was important? I find that insulting.
That's the result of four-plus months' work. The T is excruciatingly slow to get a response from. I've also, over that same period of time, on and off, been dealing with the, the new owners of Meditech, Hillco, who are interested in doing an agreement with us. But they still have to lease their building. So, and I took that, then I re-engaged with them. Well, hey, what if we went with a softer agreement just to show good faith? Can you run this, you know, send them something? Can you run this by your attorney? All taking weeks and weeks and weeks. And they came back and said, we'd be more comfortable waiting until we have our tenant, no matter how soft the agreement is. And it was going to be similarly soft to what the MBTA signed. So National Amusements didn't want to talk with us in earnest about the parking until we were resolved with the easements. They didn't want to finalize the easements until right before we sold the property, which just happened. So now National Amusements is actually engaging with us on the parking. And we've started that process and talking with their operations team. But none of this, this moves like a glacial speed, even, I mean, to my own amazement. I can't believe folks can't get back to you more quickly. And we're asking, basically, even though we're willing to pay, we're asking for consideration and a favor. So I feel there's only so hard you can push them. But the T is, the T just operates on its own, like, in its own world and schedule. And you can push and push and push and push and no answer, no answer, no answer, no answer. So nothing more months, it's not arrogance.
It appeared that it was going to be quite a simple process when you were coming in, making your speech and making your proposal, when in fact, you should have anticipated, as you say, that the T operates on its own. And, you know.
What, I think in fairness, but I don't think you folks were party to it. I think Paul and I did, did iterate on this being a challenge and I think it has become that. I understand your view, Al, but it, with the T, it's like pushing a rope uphill. I mean, we have been working on that document up quite a long time. I understand your review of the dates and I understand why you feel that way. Factually, we've really been working for months and months and months with these guys.
You know, we need to fix it. But if they go ahead, I get you don't go ahead and then say, we're not, Paul, can we say you don't get your certificate of occupancy unless you have some kind of harder parking agreement? Or is that, I mean, because what we don't want to happen, or what, I'm speaking only for myself, is now we can't, we haven't firm those up and we're now parking cars on the lawn, which is.
Yeah.
Can we go on record that we, that's?
I think the CO date is close enough.
Not on the lawn or on the street.
I mean, the optimized condition for us, which I don't have the courage to ask for, is run the run it the way the agreement contemplates, which is ninety days before. But I appreciate that you folks have already reached to help us, so I don't even have the courage to ask for that. So I think what I'm trying to say is, I feel like the CO date is close enough to Doug's event that we can have a meaningful conversation with other commercially driven people who are getting paid to park our cars.
Right, but then if they I think the statement was from Mark Schubert that if we're gonna build a multimillion dollar building and then tell you you can't have your certificate of occupancy because you don't have the parking, isn't that what you said to start this whole conversation?
Yeah, that's our big concern.
Better to ask forgiveness than permission.
Right, so as much as we all want you to get your shovels in the ground and and I think I mean, I want it to happen. We and I understand. How do we fix it? Are you willing to say you won't take the CO if you don't have the parking?
Yes, we're willing to sign the parking agreement. The event parking agreement can be signed. You guys just need to comment on it. Doug and the club are willing to execute that. We have furnished you, albeit a bit of a soft agreement with the T, and we're gonna continue to work in good faith when we get a little closer to this date. We're agreeing to be bound by that. We're too far out right now to get people to pay attention.
And and you don't think that, well, they're the T. They don't have to do anything they don't want to do.
We're gonna take a swing at trying to address. Paul pointed out a couple of specific things. Dan and I wanted to get the signature. They've been promising of this signature for two months. We wanted to get the signature before we introduced the mods to the agreement because to introduce the mods kind of restarts the clock. So they've been promising us that they would sign that agreement literally for two and a half months.
May I ask one more question?
Which is why you got an unsigned one.
So it is a public parking garage, the T?
Absolutely.
So if it's a public parking garage, they can park there if they want to?
And there are three surface commuter rail lots, three stations here in town in addition to the garage in Westwood.
And you're paying for the bus?
Yes.
Yeah. What this really does at the end of the day.
Access to pick up and drop off with our shuttle bus.
It's really about your ability to drive the shuttle bus through that little pickup drop off.
But you could just pick them up outside of that little pickup and drop off because it's a private bus.
We we could. In the garage, the statistics they shared with us, which are not online unfortunately, is the garage is eighty percent empty starting Friday night through Sunday evening.
Okay, and let's say let's be the devil's advocate. What if it's not? And they can't guarantee that it's not gonna be where they can tell there's some other event and everybody now that two years out, that garage is now full because I don't know.
Well, there's three thousand total T spaces within the town.
In the town.
Wow, a town, town surface lots.
No.
I personally would rather drive I'd rather drive the trips downtown for you guys. It would be good for your town. But we haven't gotten into that level of complexity with the T because, you know, you're we're just trying to get them to return calls. The better outcome for the town would be for us to notice and drive our parking downtown because it's gonna drive business to your local, which we're supportive of.
I don't disagree with that.
You can't even get those things introduced to the T because we're really focused on trying to get a single done here.
Right, so how do we fix it?
Let me just let's be let's go right on Joe's comments.
As far as the night of events, you're talking about Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Are there other nights also that you you could have?
Not that we would have overflow parking.
Okay.
So a weekend event might start on a Thursday, but it'd be very low attendance.
Okay. Part of that is that, do you take the commuter rail?
Not anymore.
They do. I mean, they're pretty empty over the weekend and that's just the way they are. And I have no problem with, you know, I can see where they would allow for it to happen because it would be there wouldn't be many cars. There shouldn't be many cars.
You'd like to think they'll behave in a commercially rational way, right, which is we're driving revenue to their we're not asking for free parking. We're driving business to them.
So what we have here in seven is that we said before you get a permit to start.
Correct.
Start. Your idea would be before you get a certificate of occupancy.
My thought process is, and this comes out of our conversations with Paul, is that we work quickly to sign and execute the memorandum of understanding. So you have you have another piece of paper above and beyond the conditions that are in the permit.
I was before we go before we go there, I would want both. I would want to change seven. This is just something that we could think of is instead of to change it to before you get a certificate of occupancy, plus you're gonna have.
Yes.
Have that.
And we will also attempt to move the T toward and get Paul has pointed out a couple of specific conditions that he does not like. We're gonna try and drive them through that as well.
On that other one, condition ten, I don't like Perry said, it doesn't seem to be a problem. If anyone wants to answer this, it's just how long do you think that would it take to get that done?
I know.
Which one? The one with the?
The easements.
The easements.
I think so. We've reached out to Mark. I think Mark has a couple of questions. He's trying to get a hold of Paul. We've got Dan Bailey on our the club's attorney, Dan Bailey, on high alert to deal with two issues, which is to get these easements in place in to work through whatever issues that council officer might have with a parking event parking agreement.
So you think that you could on this on ten, you probably could get it done within a month or two, you think, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I think if we'll pay attention. I think I think if you gave us a month on condition ten, we can definitely slam that home. I wouldn't be too concerned.
Yeah, we're not we're not too worried. I just wanted to get that out of the way and.
And Paul, does Tony know about the events parking agreement coming his way?
I did send him a copy of the revised version. The end, excuse me, the end of the week. He was away. So that's on a list of things that I need to talk to him about. He was at the time that you guys originally submitted this and I looked at it. At that time, I shook my head and said, no, it shouldn't be me that is in charge of this. It shouldn't be police or Tony. So we'll work that out. I'm not worried about that. And I think we can probably, you know, finalize this MOU with the town fairly soon. And we will if you guys get back to me with the red line changes that I sent you last week, let me know if these are okay with you. I will then send it to council. I think I think I changed this like Thursday and I sent you a revised version.
I missed it, Paul. So do you have that or? Apparently I have it and I missed it. So, yeah, we can do that.
All right, yeah, that's not a problem. Just so we let's just regroup here. So memorandum of understanding, we're gonna work on this to get this thing finalized. I my suggestion is and Paul, you can tell me if I'm wrong, is that we run this through town council, have them take a look at it and and see if it's okay. As well as this, you would before you'd get a certificate of occupancy, you would have a parking plan? Is that is that what I'm hearing that we're gonna have both of these? Or is this gonna is this what you're if this passes muster, this is it? And then you don't you would not need a you still have to have one for a special events, correct?
Parking plan.
Parking plan for special events, right? So that's the second that's the second failsafe. There's two. You have this providing it passes the.
Town council and Tony.
Gets the blessing. They then you would still have to go ninety days before an event to save the police department. And you would have to submit, you know, like we expect to get, you know, six hundred people. We they are gonna park here, here, and here.
Mm-hmm.
Is that so there are basically two. This is the agreement with the T.
Yep.
This would be the agreement with the town.
Yep.
Correct.
And the reality is that, you know, the T really isn't gonna kick people out of their garage or surface lots.
It's basically pick up, pick up and drop off.
Yeah. And you would want it to be safe. That's why you want to pull in and pick them up at a standard standard place. You wouldn't say, well, you guys have to cross the street here where it may not be safe and to be picked up. So that's why you want to go through the.
Yeah, Doug's team also. The intent is with your with your ticket to the event, you get a parking pass that gets presented, which is another complexity. I don't mean to but we're.
Are you gonna pay for the parking for these people to go?
It's an element. It's built into the program. Yeah.
So you're gonna you're gonna have a guy down there. He's just.
That's your plan.
You guys gotta talk.
So you're gonna you're gonna you're gonna stand there, keep pushing the button, get the you're gonna stand there, keep pushing the button, get the tickets.
They pay for the road and we pay for the shuttle.
Okay.
All right.
I'm sorry, I misrepresented.
I could see standing there pushing the button, taking the tickets.
Okay, I missed it.
This is not a public hearing, but we do have a couple of members of the audience. So if someone's here has a comment on this or is here for this, we will hear from you.
I think Tom kind of answered a question that I was going to ask. We talked about the parking at either the lots here in town or at Westwood Station. And I said it's listed right in here that they will pay the fees subject to payment of the MBTA's posted parking rates for each MDA and TPTA. Well, what about those that are parked on the property? Are you gonna be charging for parking on a cash basis as the rates for the others?
On our property?
Yes.
We'll probably do something where yes, but it's because you're getting the added service of valet. And that will help defray the cost of the shuttle bus service.
Are we gonna need some sort of permit for that in order to charge?
I don't know.
I don't think so, no.
That's a good question.
They can do that on their property.
Let me ask you, you T writers.
Yeah, but you can't. I think you need to look at that because.
If you if you park it uptown, if you park it north central, and you do you do they charge to park up?
Not at night.
Not at night or weekends? I mean, what do they do they?
It's four dollars there and over here at Depot, it's two dollars. I don't know if they come by on the weekends or not.
Well, they ticket on weekends.
Do they?
In Needham, they do. I've been ticketed.
Yeah, but that's a fancy town.
I think they ticket.
They go through the lots on weekends and if you're parked.
They do up here?
I don't know.
I would be surprised if they don't because they wouldn't treat one town different than another town.
They want their money.
What's the rate in Needham?
Seven bucks a day.
Yeah.
Four only four.
Two bucks or four bucks there and there.
You drive from Needham to.
Tom, and that's why I brought that up.
I might come over here and park out.
Yeah, we're more fun.
You can park at the post office, park a lot, lock down for free.
I like Lewis's.
Mr. Chair, can I ask?
You can. Yes, Mrs. Olmert.
How far is it from the Westwood Station to the skating club? Distance? Is that a mile?
Mile and a half.
Mile and a half.
How far is it from the skating club to?
Lewis's.
One A.
I don't know.
I don't honestly know, Debbie. I'm not sure.
I mean, I'm just kind of thinking, you know, we have cars parked all I mean, isn't there some private company, private landowner around here that would like to make a little extra money and and, you know, if the T doesn't want your money because they'll just take it out of our other pocket, couldn't.
That's for them to work out if they can.
Yeah, we're actively at.
We have a lot of cars parked around town.
We're at Paul's suggestion, Doug has an active calling program. Norstar has mapped down all the landowners on the university app. We're actively calling them. The only one who's expressed any near any interest in trying to do something in the near term is actually National Amusements. The rest of the folks in general.
There's a Taylor Refrigeration company that was signing a deal now, but it's only twenty cents.
Well, I'm thinking that little piece dirt up by Forbes and all and Meditech and UTI. There's.
There's a huge lot there at UTI and that's another potential.
And it's a private you don't I mean, it's a private industry and it's weekends and nights. It's their businesses aren't open then.
Yeah, they could look into that.
I mean, maybe we could get an agreement. It doesn't do we care if it's MBTA if they cover the spots?
No.
Paul's been clear about that.
That doesn't matter. It was just we I wrote the condition specifically that we wanted prior to they start construction, lock down the parking. And so there's it's not as clear cut and, you know, Tom's explanation of the whole situation, you know, it's not a cut and dry thing. And, you know, people can park at any of the T stations already and they, you know, probably wouldn't be kicked out. And the separate memorandum of understanding with the town says that they agree that they won't hold a special event until the town has granted them approval.
Would you have the right to deny?
Through that process.
Through that process.
I would I would think the T would welcome it on a Saturday if they're, say, eighty percent empty.
Their government.
And if you say, I'm gonna give you five hundred park, I'm gonna five hundred people are gonna come in and pay. All you gotta let me do is put my little van in and out a couple of times in an hour. You're gonna catch you're gonna catch five hundred people at ten bucks a person or whatever. It adds up seven or eight times a year. It's it's revenue for the T. So, all right, Paul, let's how do we get this? How can I put you in the skating club of Boston? So we have this. It's signed. We I think we all agree we should run it by legal counsel and town council and and just get the looksy on it. And if this is a go or an okay, and the ninety day pre-event special permit by probably the town manager of the police department.
The other memorandum of understanding.
If the other if the two combined, I mean, how do we get these guys to be able to now you can do site work right now, but how do we get them? How do we satisfy the Mark Schubert's fears?
So that, you know.
So he can get a put a foundation on the ground.
Mark Schubert said that he'll go along with whatever the planning board decides tonight.
So we would have we would have to change seven, right?
But to change condition number seven, to change any special permit condition, unfortunately, the state law doesn't differentiate between what's a minor and a major amendment to a special permit. So in the past, when this has come up, we've required the applicant to come back to a formally announced hearing where we put it in reverse.
Public notice.
Put it in the in the newspaper, hold a public hearing, and then have a full discussion to decide whether we wanted to cross that condition out completely or whether you wanted to modify it in some way to say, for example, prior to the issuance of the certificate.
That's on a that's if we deem it a major modification.
No, because the state law doesn't really make.
I thought we had if it's a minor modification, we can do it as a board.
Under site plan approval, but not special permit.
But not special permit.
Oh, interesting.
So for a site plan approval, you have it in your rules, planning board rules and regulations, that I have the authority to grant minor amendments to site plans. But special permits are regulated under chapter forty A and it's a more formal process. What I would suggest.
If seven stayed in. If seven stayed in.
All right, continue. So your suggestion. So I like the idea of continuing to talk to the T to firm up the language in seven in their MOU that just says that they'll consider a license application. And if if you want me to come to a meeting with you guys at the T to drive home to them that, you know, thank you, but the planning board would like something a little more concrete, I would be wanting to help you guys out.
We will endeavor to make that happen.
We've had other situations here that people had to work with the T and it was the same story. So that's why, you know, we're not we're not thinking that they are telling us what's going on with the T because we know that there are difficult bureaucracy to deal with. So, yeah, we've got a signed version. If there's a way we can maybe firm up this language, that would be helpful. We will continue and I will send a copy of the MBTA MOU to town council for review. We will continue to work with them on the other memorandum of understanding, which requires this parking plan and a parking approval license from the town within ninety days prior to the event. So we'll continue to work with them on that.
To that in the next couple of weeks.
Once we've got that to a point where we're all agreed that it's acceptable, we will send that to town council to review. And that's kind of our failsafe. If the board or if the applicant wants to officially petition the board to change or delete the special permit condition requiring that they have this agreement before they start construction, they can formally apply to do that at any time. I would like to try to keep the pressure on them to get one of these signed parking agreements. And so I think a pathway would be for the board to vote. And so, um, I think a pathway would be for the board to vote to let them start construction, but to come back in six months in October and hopefully they will have something in hand. I think the situation's gonna change when people start seeing heavy equipment and construction taking place. If they don't see that, they just like, yeah, maybe they're gonna build this, maybe they're not. Why will I enter into agreement two years from now? But I would like to see if, um, if Dan and Doug can continue to try to work and we can provide you with some other, you know, businesses in town that have, um, large parking lots. Hillco that owns the old Meditech building right next door, they've been trying to lease that building. I think they just have some of it leased now, and I understand what they said where they don't want to walk in an agreement when a, a future tenant that might take three floors comes in and he blocks it, at, at signing lease because there's a, a parking agreement.
Or they have a weekend need, the tenant.
Right. So I, I understand that and, and, and I, I know I've met this guy at Hillco that they've been talking to. However, Hillco owns 825 University Ave across the street, the Instron property, which also has plenty of parking. And so I suggested to Tom, you know, if you already know this guy, try talking about across the street. So I'm, so I'm throwing this out as kind of a compromise. If the board were to vote to allow them to start construction, but ask them to return, um, within six months with, um, a report to the board and hopefully with some agreements in hand. And, um, and, and we talk about where we are at that point. And if at that point, um, um, nothing has been locked in with any of the, the neighboring property owners, they can apply to have that condition eliminated and we just go with the fallback position of the T does have public parking and they have in write, in writing, they have signed this other memorandum of understanding with the town, which, uh, states that they will not have, have any big events there unless the town grants a, a license for each event.
So, tonight, so we, tonight, we still need, before you can go to Mr. Schubert and get a permit to start construction, we still have to run this by, I mean, not us, you still have to take care of condition 10.
Yes.
That would be the.
We, we could certainly agree to have that completed a month from now. The easement is not a problem.
So if this board agrees with, with town planners' assessment of the situation and we follow his advice on this and that, that, um, you know, we would notify the, the building inspector that, you know, I, with the exception of number 10, uh, you know, conditions have been met, we were okay with him issuing you a, a permit to start construction. You see, obviously still, he's still gonna want number 10 taken care of, but that would be, I think, right?
So is, is that acceptable to you? Uh, can you, can you hold off on construction till the easements are, are resolved? Or are you ask, would, would you like?
I think Mr. Schubert may, may call, make their call on that one.
Well, I think, I, just as a suggestion, not for me to tell you guys your business, but most towns will let us do earthwork. It, it, normally you have to have a permit, building permit in hand before you put one cubic yard of concrete in the ground. And we have about two months of.
Well, you, I mean, I don't think anybody wants you to not go out and start staking and, and, and start.
We would love to get going full tilt on site work.
Big cutting trees.
Yeah. Uh, we'd love to go full tilt on site work.
Turn the camera off.
But, but you need a permit to put a foundation in, right? To dig a hole for foundation.
Normally, we can do pretty much unlimited site work. You cannot put a foundation in the ground in most communities. And there is no reason we cannot resolve the easement thing in two weeks, now that we're focused on it. Dan's reached out. I think that gentleman was traveling or off or something. I'm not sure. I got some sob story about that, but, um. So I think we can get, we can knock off number 10 in a month or less. And we can certainly knock off the, the long-term memorandum of understanding within the parking from our view in a month or less.
I think the town on that is, that wouldn't be, I, Paul, I don't foresee any issue with the town on that.
I don't either, no.
No.
And, and.
I think at six months, to your point, hold our feet to the fire. We'll come in and update on the status of our ability to generate an, an agreement.
I mean, maybe.
At that point in time, we've made good faith effort and we haven't been able to achieve that, then maybe at that point in time, we come in and file for a minor amendment, which I guess is not a staff-handled event here on a special permit, which I didn't know honestly. So we would then file and look for you guys to rely on the, the conditions in your special permit, the parking memorandum of understanding.
And it's, and it's to your detriment. If you've now done site work, you're ready and you haven't done this work, we still have the ability to say.
If the planning.
We don't want to do that?
If in six months, um, they, they haven't been able to secure a parking agreement with someone within a couple of miles, um, and they petition the board to strike that condition of approval of special permit requiring that. Um, if the board decides in six months that, you know, that's not acceptable, then, um, the board could recommend to the building inspector to stop construction. So I, you know, I want to try to keep the pressure on them to, to, to try to get one of these parking agreements, but I also want to, um, let them go forward with construction, you know. We want to let them continue with the project and not have it run off schedule, but we want to keep the pressure on them to secure the parking agreement and, and, and resolve this issue.
There's another real, oh, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
So as far as condition seven, what are we looking for tonight to waive temporarily? Is that it?
Basically.
For six months?
Or make it a condition of occupancy permit.
So that would, that would have to be part of the amendment, the formal amendment, yeah.
Okay. Well, then that would be at six months. If you folks aren't satisfied, at six months, we're gonna come back in and present the work we've done to try and achieve an outcome that, that satisfies that. Prior to that, we're gonna execute the easements, the memorandum of understanding, and we're gonna attempt to get the T agreement tuned up a little bit, and we will make best efforts on that.
Or find somebody else.
I gotta tell you, the best case, worst case scenario, use the T station at North Central. You, you tell everybody, meet at North Central. You have a nice overhang, so if it's bad weather, they're under an overhang. There's a, there's a, a perfect pull-in, pull-out. And the T can't stop you from doing that. You pull in, you pick the people up, they're under a nice overhang, staying nice and dry.
And there's a whole other private lot over on the other side.
Yeah, but they, but North Central, they get right on the, step from the curb right onto the thing, off, zip, zip, do, die, you're down there, you bring them back. You drop them off at North Central, they cross the tracks and they.
Lot losses.
The T gets its money. You get your, you have a nice easement, a nice queue to pick the people up. They stay dry. I can't see why that wouldn't work in the long run either.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To Mr. Halkeotis's, uh, point of keeping their feet to the fire, if you will, why not 90 days instead of six months? And then if we get 90 days, we extend it for another 90 days. I, I just haven't been impressed with the ways things have been progressing. And, uh, that's my opinion. And, uh, you know, you want to keep the toes to the fire, keep it hot.
Well, you figure it's gonna take you a month to get your permit from, to start construction probably, right?
No, it's, it's ready. You guys have the check. He's waiting for guidance from Paul.
Yeah, they're, they're waiting here for us, what happens to them.
And condition 10, there's, there's no bearing on that?
Um, I'm not, I'm not as concerned.
Obviously, the easements aren't under where the building is anyway, so.
And condition 10 is, is a requirement, but I'm, I'm just not as concerned with that and, and I'm, um, sure that we'll be able to work that out. Condition 10, that was not something that I came up with. I, I think it came from, um, a memory, a, a recommendation from Mark Ryan. And so, um, that's, that's not a big, as big a concern as the parking.
To Mr. Porro's point, uh, three months, if we go three months and they, they, they have to, like, give us a three-month update on, uh.
No problem.
You know, some kind of.
We can certainly knock off a lot, make good progress on the paperwork side.
Yeah.
90 days from now, you know, you're.
You're not gonna get a lot.
Uh, you know, we're, we're, we're 21 months.
You're still 21 months, yeah.
Happy, happy to try and do it. I mean, we're, we're not here to aggravate you guys. We're happy to make good faith.
I don't know if they need to come in, Al, or send a letter on where they are or 90 days and.
Oh, I, I'd like to hear an update in.
Yeah.
In a letter or in person?
In person.
No problem.
He's only in Needham. He can hop, skip and a jump. Once he gets his car out of the lot.
He gets paid for coming. Spending more of your money.
Flat fee. He's winning tonight. He's winning tonight. No problem. We'd gladly come in and update you guys. I think we'll have a good story.
Uh, I, first, I think let's, let's, uh, talk about Paul's recommendation. Do we want to, uh, put that in a form of a motion that we, uh, maybe Paul, you could just give us that Reader's Digest version exactly.
So I'd, I'd recommend that the board, uh, make a motion to, um, have me send, uh, an email memorandum to the building inspector, letting him know that this was discussed with the skating club tonight and that the board felt that, um, they should be allowed to commence construction forthwith um, subject to the following. And that would be that, uh, they complete the memorandum of understanding between the skating club and the town, which requires a, a parking plan and a license for each special event. So that would, um, provide a, a layer of comfort for the board. Uh, and that they continue to, uh, work with the MBTA to, uh, firm up the language, uh, condition number seven in the MOU with the MBTA, um, to change the language that says that they'll consider a license application to something stronger. Ideally, would say that they would, you know, grant a license application. That would be the second. The third item that they would continue to work with, um, to, to contact neighboring property owners to secure the written parking agreement, um, for the special events. And the last item would be that they return to the planning board, um, and schedule a meeting in, in 90 days to provide the board with, um, the status of, uh, those efforts.
And this will go to town council?
Yes, and both memorandum of understandings, um, with the MBTA and the one with, with the town would be reviewed, uh, and approved by town council.
So moved? Did you send that letter?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now discussion. Mrs. Holmwood.
If they find somebody else, Norwood Depot or Central or whatever, or somebody, does this, can we pull this out of the package? If they bring us something else?
It should be up to the skating club on where they want to have their guests park on any given event, whether they want to have them do it at a T lot or on, on a neighboring property. I don't really care.
Right, but you've got in there that they're going to do this MOU with the T that's in there. But if that, they change their mind, we could, right, we can pull it out. Okay, alright.
It can be on the table as an option at any time. If one of the other neighboring property owners that says it's okay, um, says not that night, we can't help you out, then that's plan B with the.
Just to refresh, how many extra spaces do you need for a special event? For a major, the biggest possible.
I think it's 500.
Roughly 500.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, basically if they can.
The 500.
If they get up to, they just have to really get up to 500 and.
Which is, yeah, that's it.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing that, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five zero. Alright, we'll see you in a couple of months. Good luck.
Thank you. And I will copy you guys on the communication to the building inspector, so you have that.
Yeah, Paul, take care of you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Don't listen to Ernie. Don't take down any trades, please. Don't listen to Ernie.
Alright, we have.
Did Mr. Solomon want to say anything or did we just, he's just hanging around?
Alright.
Chopping up these double runner skates.
There you go. And here comes John.
Hey, Dan, what's going on?
How you doing, folks? We'll let the next group file in here and then we'll get going. Okay, how we doing, John?
Uh, we're doing good, so.
Just before you go, and just a review, um, at our last, uh, meeting, we did vote unanimously to start the proceedings, to pull the bond. And so, Paul, we're here tonight for, to follow up on where we're at.
Yep, and I can, um, just bring you up to speed on the bond calling. Um, we, uh, we contacted Mr. Gomes following, um, the planning board's vote two weeks ago and, and told him that the board voted to recall the bond. And that the treasurer had provided us with a withdrawal slip and we asked Mr. Gomes to come and sign the withdrawal slip. He came, uh, that day and signed it and we gave it to, um, Mark Good, the town treasurer. He went to the bank, withdrew the money, and it is setting up a special account, um, for completing the project. So the money is in hand. Mr. Gomes, um, cooperated. He even, um, wrote a check to, uh, cover the amount of money that the State Department of Revenue, um, seized from him and paid for the, uh, the bank fee for that.
Yeah, yeah, I think he wants to get this behind him. He just needs some help doing it.
Okay, alright, John, so where are we?
So, um, and I do have to apologize because I thought we'd be a little bit farther along and it's nobody's issue except mine, but, so I will show you this set of plans and I just had a nice chat with Mary and Jeff out in the, um.
Are these all the same?
Yeah, they're all the same, in the hallway, um, so, um, and, and I'm glad Mario did what he did because I think that gives us all a level of comfort that somebody couldn't go into that account and take more money out because that could have been a disaster. Um, so, um, what this is showing is pretty close, I think, to the final plan. Um, after having a chat with Jeff and Mary, I think we might want to make a few, um, small, um, changes. Dropped my pen somewhere.
Yeah, drop.
Paul Stowe. Thank you.
Two bucks.
So, um, let me just start. One thing I did is I went up and measured the, um, creeping junipers at the, um, at the senior high, which is what Mark was, um, where the idea came from for the junipers. And they're about five feet on center. So I changed the plan to show these five feet on center. I had them 10 feet on center one way and six feet the other way. So there were about 34, 35 plants. Now there's 50 plants. So that will.
That'll hold that back.
It's on the slope.
That'll, it's, that's what's on the slope.
Wow.
Okay.
Hmm.
That's, they're pretty close together up there. So they, they.
I'm just thinking that you're two to one slope, that's.
Yes. So, um, but, um, Mary and Jeff may want to, um, substitute some of the junipers for some other plants. Um, so we might just look into that quickly. Um, at the bottom of the slope, um, can, what's his name, Keenan, Keegan? Anyway, he did make a good point and that is that, you know, you're gonna have some pretty good runoff coming down this slope and we don't want that running over the retaining wall, right? You know, it's not gonna be a ton of water. It's not gonna
You don't want a wall.
Look like Washington Street, but, but you, yeah, so, um, oftentimes nowadays when we do like driveways near wetlands, we put an infiltration trench, which is essentially, you know, two feet deep, maybe a foot or two feet wide, depending on what we want to capture. With crushed stone in the bottom, then we put some filter fabric and then we put larger stones on the top for actually in that case, people can drive over them. In this case, it'll kind of make a little separation between the slope and the, the area down below, which will just be, have a little bit less than 10 inches of pitch across it.
So is the, the dark line is the wall?
The dark line's the wall.
And then you have the terrace?
The terrace, which has like a 1% slope on it.
Yeah, and then, and then the, and then the two to one.
The two to one. The two to one coming down.
Did you get that squared away with Mr. Ryan?
I did.
Okay, and he's okay with it?
I did. So, and he's okay with, with this type of wall. So, what I, um, expect here is an allen block wall, right? It's less than four feet high. We can go, well, even with, so, anyway, we can go higher, but it's less than four feet high, as designed. It's following the, um, ninety contour, elevation ninety, and the top of the wall is ninety-three point one five. I think that's what he said here, somewhere. Um, top of wall ninety-three point one five, so, three feet, two inches.
Is that, that terrace, is that, I mean, is that a possible area for them to put a couple chairs up there, or not really?
No, I don't think so.
It's a great spot for the tomatoes.
Right, right.
It will provide an area for planting.
For planting. They're gonna do some planting.
Right, so what I wrote on here for now, um, is, um, you know, we call that the level planting area, nine hundred and five square feet, plus a minus. Property owner to install plantings in this location. Twenty scale.
Twenty scale.
So, this is about ten feet wide and about, you know, a hundred and ten feet long. So, um, but now we're thinking maybe, um, Jeff and Mary will, um, hire someone just to give us maybe a little list of plantings, and then we're gonna put those on there, and then Mario will provide the plantings. Plant the plantings, or just provide? Provide and plant the plantings, to some extent. There'd be flowers and that sort of thing. Um, and, um, and then, you know, down the bottom, you know, you'll have your, just an underdrain for the, so we don't get any water piling up behind the, behind the wall itself. Um, so, and then the wall, we're showing, um, it's on here, so my glasses, but anyway, we're showing, um, GeoGrid holding the wall back. So, you put the first GeoGrid at the first block, and then you put the next one, two blocks up, and that's what Mark Ryan was asking for. So, it says it right here. High-strength polyester mesh, GeoGrid. So, there's two of those. They go back about four feet, so, um, and that's a standard thing with these walls, even though it's usually used on higher walls. Um, so that's it. So, um, I've been using PJ Hayes, even though I don't think in the end I'm gonna have them really bid on this, only because, A, they're expensive.
But they're good.
They're very good. But the other thing is.
We deserve good, after what we've put up with here, John.
Right, but I can, I can get some good bidders who can do this. I don't think PJ Hayes is gonna do this this year. That would be my guess. I'll talk to them about it.
Can you answer the question?
Yes, Debbie.
This is, all this is great, but this is their land, correct?
Yeah.
So, what, my, my concern is, is this is their land, he's paying for it, but my concern is up here, that's town land, and the dead trees, and that, because this is their land, this is great that he's gonna do this, but he's got all this dead stuff up here on, that we're gonna take out of our tree budget to put a tree back in that he didn't plant properly?
No.
Well, there's only two trees that are on town, quote-unquote, town property. I don't think you guys actually own this yet, do they, Paul?
The road's not accepted.
It's, it's, but anyway, it would become town property. So, there's two of those, which Mark Ryan said, he want, they're like beat up. So, he wants those out of there, and I replaced it with a, with one London plane tree, two and a half inch caliber tree.
You replaced two with one?
Well, the two are kind of small.
No, I meant, you replaced two trees with one tree?
Yeah.
But they're in two different spots, aren't they?
No, they're right next to each other. They're right here, Debbie.
Oh. Well, as you're coming up the circle, there's two more that are buried in about this far out there.
Right, those trees are on, uh, private property now, but we did have this conversation. We're gonna meet and look at those trees, and those may be coming out and being replaced also.
They're not, uh, right next to the berm? I've got pictures on my phone. I'll never find them.
Well, Debbie, and not being argumentative, but this is all from on-the-ground surveys, so these trees are where they're shown on the plan.
Okay.
So, there's three trees, um, that are, and I wish the draftsman, 'cause we actually measure them and put that stuff on the.
So, the town area that we covered is gonna get into some new trees.
Yeah.
Well, there's, what they're showing on the plan is to remove those trees that are buried up to their neck and dying. Those two that they've identified, interplace that with one, um, two and a half inch caliber London plane tree. To, to address your concern, we could, we could ask them to put another tree in, um, so that those two are being replaced by two.
I would like to have two, please.
Okay, so two trees.
Well, I mean, you know, I think it's great that, that he's stepping up and using his, you know, to fix their property, and, and I don't want the, you know, that's kind of.
Is there a final course on that up there?
Yeah.
There is a final course.
Yeah.
So, now, I think in our last conversation, John, we, the, the curb is, is, it is what it is. Right? We're not digging that road back up and.
Yeah, Mark's pretty much, my conversation with Mark.
We're not lifting up the granite.
He's kind of reluctantly signing off on that.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Okay, yeah, I'll jump in. Just leave that alone. Okay. And then, uh, obviously, you said that the, the fence will come down during construction, and then we'll go back up the, the barrier, the, at the top of the, the.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's all coming down.
Whatever, whatever's coming down will be replayed, will be put back up at the end, when you're all done.
And, and there are some places where it needs to be, um, repaired. So, it needs to be repaired in places, and then removed and reset in places.
Now, the ten thousand dollar, or the sixty thousand dollar question. Where do you think this will come in? Are you gonna be okay with that, or are we going back to Mario?
No, so, I mean, I, all of this stuff here that's shown on this plan is twenty thousand dollars.
The wall?
The wall's only maybe six or seven thousand bucks.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Have a guy put that wall in?
Yeah. So, you sure you just want two trees, Debbie?
I'm glad. No, can I have some more? We got some money left. He took all the trees down the back that he wasn't gonna touch, remember?
My buddies are nice.
You know, at this point, from him, I take our buddies. He fern-gullied the entire property and said they were all dead. They weren't dead.
Alright. Paul, do you have anything to?
You know, I'm sick of being a doctor, okay?
We just, um.
We need, we need to, and I'm sorry, Paul, but we need to get something where everybody sort of signs off on, you know, we need really almost a memorandum of understanding, because we don't wanna do this again. We wanna show Mario that we know how to do this without him, without kind of getting in an argument, so, um, I mean, I could draw something up about, you know, what needs, what's gonna get done, and how it's gonna get done, and.
So, we're, we, to kind of pull back from this plan, um, this plan, this is the first time I'm seeing it, so I've gotta review it. Mark Ryan's gotta review it, and we have to hear back from him. But this plan is effectively a modification to the approved plan from a few years ago. So, the board really needs to vote to approve the modification to the original approved plan, to, to tie up the loose ends of, hey, we're not gonna build this the way we said we were going to, um, from the original, um, street extension plan.
This has to be a plan of record once you and Mark Ryan sign off on it.
So, what I'd like to do is, is, um, at the next meeting, ask John to finalize all of this, um, to ask, um, the property owners to provide John with the list of plantings that they would like to see, um, put, put in there, and that gets added to the plan, just to firm that up, that that's what's gonna happen. Have John, um, send back, you know, the revised plan, um, for, for a final review with, with Mark Ryan and myself, and then at, at a, at the following planning board meeting, have the board vote to approve this as a modification to the approved plan.
Do we need anything from you folks, um, that would say that they have seen the plan and?
An affidavit of some sort.
An affidavit or something, that they're, they're on board, and they've given permission to do this, or is that something that we don't have to get involved in?
I think, I think, and I don't wanna complicate it, but I don't, I think it might be a good idea if there was some sort of memorandum of understanding, just listing out what's gonna happen and, and just have everybody.
We don't want you to be surprised, but yet, we wanna make sure that.
You're satisfied.
That you, that you understand what's gonna happen, and you, you know, because there's gonna be people working on your yard.
Yeah, isn't our memorandum of understanding our site plan approval? Could we see?
Well, I think, no.
But that's for a project.
Right, and I'd like to see the old one that we signed, that said this is what he was gonna do, so I can match it with this one, 'cause we're not, we're gonna do that for the next meeting, correct?
Yeah, so there isn't, there isn't like an MOU from before. We have the approved plan.
I'd like, can I see the approved plan from two years ago?
Yeah.
Because, again, I get that this, but this isn't, this is private property, so.
Well, this shows the right-of-way everything.
Do you wanna see it? Is that what you were saying? I think.
Yeah, Paul, we've got it from before. I mean, we had hours and hours of discussion on this landscaping thing, and the, and the big rock, and the don't take the trees, and then we just.
Paul, you would have copies, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, yeah.
So, what'll happen, Debbie, is if all parties agree on this, and Paul, Mark Ryan, we do the plan, and, and, you know, we, we, the neighbors are, we're ready to go, we will enter this as a plan of record.
Right.
And we'll have, we'll vote on that at a future meeting, to make this part of the official record, and it gets, gets recorded, or doesn't need to be. Just has to be.
And I sort of asked my draftsman, I don't think he understood what I said, was saying, to set it up like the other plans, like the landmark engineering plans, so that it kind of looks like those plans. I mean, they have a different title box. But do you wanna sign it? I mean, I think you probably should.
If you wanna put signature lines in there, that's fine.
That's fine.
That makes it clear. And, and having some sort of a, a letter from the owners, um, which says that they've reviewed this plan and the plantings, and that they, they authorized that it be constructed on their property, and that way it protects everyone involved, and, and this is the plan that's gonna get built.
So, I could draw something up, and you could look it over and decide if, you know, if that's what you wanna do. I mean, I.
Is our next meeting the twenty-second?
Yes.
And you'd be able to have it by then?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I kind of got pushed back a little bit with some stuff, but, but we're working on this now, so, um, you know, as soon as I can.
'Cause we run into town meeting, and we're, but, the twenty-second is probably your best last chance before we hit that cycle, and we get a little disrupted, right?
Yeah, we'd like to get this.
Yeah, wrapped up.
And, and we'd like to see, you know, I, I would like to see a, um, like a construction deadline, that we, we've got something in writing that says this'll be done by the Fourth of July, or something, just so that the heat's on to finish this project, 'cause it's gone on far too long.
Al, anything on the plans?
I'm good, as to what I've heard.
Okay.
Let's see if it happens.
I'm happy as long as the neighbors are happy, and everyone gets what they want.
Alright, so I think everybody's got their marching orders, right? We're gonna, uh, you'll take care of whatever you need to do. We'll get something from the neighbors. Uh, this'll get looked at by Paul and, and Mark Ryan, and, uh, you'll make any changes. You'll put two trees instead of one, and, um.
Yeah. Do you want me to drop it off at work, or do you want me to do it?
We can do it tomorrow.
Okay.
And just, um, to Debbie's point on town and the right-of-way, um, were there no other issues with, uh, sewer caps that were up too high, or, you know, a lot of times, you know, you go up there and you see a, a drain spray painted orange, because it's above the, above the, everything else is all set?
Everything else is okay.
I think everything is all set. I think the only thing, you know, not done are there's four bounds to be set, and then there's a number of iron pipes to be set, but I'll, I'll put that in my, you know.
And once everything is complete, will he, Mario have to submit an ASBIL?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll put that in there, too. The ASBIL, I'm sure Paul and Mark will remind me if I can set the bounds and the iron pipes. So, that, right, and I've already talked to Mario about this. So, once we get a, all of that cost put together, he's gonna put money, not from the sixty-seven thousand dollars, from a different funding source, whatever that is, in an account with his name and my name. And then I'm, you're the boss of me at that point.
And then that, that, then our sixty-five thousand becomes, becomes the failsafe, kind of.
Yeah, exactly. If he doesn't, if he doesn't perform, then you have that money. You'll have a plan, you'll have a cost, you'll have a potential contractor, and you'll be done, hopefully. But, uh, you, you know, somewhat in his defense, he, he seems to wanna get this behind him. He just doesn't.
I would hope he would.
He just kind of doesn't know really how to do it.
I think, John, you helping him out here has been a life sentence, 'cause we'd be chasing this thing forever.
Yeah, that's, that's good, thanks.
Matt, we've got one more question.
Yes.
Are you gonna come back with a price, or we don't care about the price?
Yeah, no, we're gonna come, no, you, you guys, we need a price. We need a price. That's what we laid this, that's how we laid this out.
Yeah.
The first day. So, we're gonna get a price, and it's gonna include this work.
Okay, alright.
Bounds, iron pipes, ASBIL, anything else Mark Ryan comes up with, and we're gonna get a sec, a separate sort of bond, so to speak.
Okay.
And it'll be my name and Mario's name, and.
Okay.
And then, um, go from there. Hopefully, it'll all work out, you know?
And, and what kind of timeframe do you think this can get completed?
I would give him until June thirtieth. I think we wanna get this in before it gets really hot, you know? We wanna get this in.
Especially those plantings.
Yeah, we wanna get them in.
Alright, so when the planning board.
They'll have a watering schedule for those?
Yeah, well.
When the planning.
How's your hose? You got a long hose?
We'll put that in the, we'll put that in the bond. Two hundred feet of hose.
When the board votes to approve the modification to the plan, um, that can include a condition of approval that, um, the project be completed by June thirtieth, so that we try to lock that in and, and, um, keep the pressure on them to complete this work.
I agree, a hundred percent.
Alright, great. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, John.
Alright.
Thanks, Debbie. I saw Maureen yesterday.
I owe her a call.
Oh, I'll tell her that.
I'll find out if you're saying bad things about me after.
Talked to my wife. They're good buddies.
Things from the memorandum, street name change, Moore Street Extension to Park Place. There was a letter in your packet about, uh, the why on that from Cecil Group, and, um, recommendation why it would be done that way?
That's pretty clever. I thought it was a great idea, keeping the Monopoly theme going and.
Do we have a park place? I don't know. That, the police department, obviously, and fire would have to sign off on that as well, but, so.
I, you know, I tried to just summarize, uh, where we are with this project, and I provided a couple of graphics that the Cecil, that Steve Cecil prepared, but I really do have, um, this, these are all detailed specifications for, um, for all of the signs, what they'll look like, where they'll go, and, um, what they've done is set us up so that we can put this out to bid. The signs have been grouped into three, three groups. The ones out on Route One, that will be state highway green signs, the, um, internal wayfinding signs that point people in the directions of the different streets in the park, um, and the, uh, the gateway sign. I met with, um, David Spiegel, uh, last week. He, the gateway sign is gonna go on his property outside of the right-of-way, right at that intersection of, um, Moore Street Extension and Route One, that he already has an existing, like, ladder sign, honeydew donuts, that lists those businesses. It's gonna be, um, a little bit, uh, further all, you know, about ten, fifteen feet away from that, and this gateway sign will, will look different and be attractive, and, and draw people's attention to, to, uh, the street. He said that, um, to draw their attention to Vanderbilt Park, he owns property on both sides of Moore Street Extension. He said, just give me a letter from the planning board saying that they voted to change the street name, and he will notify his tenants that, um, they're on a new street, and they're gonna need to get their addresses changed. going to need to get their addresses changed, and take care of some administrative businesses associated with the street name change.
Is that a town meeting? Does town meeting have to vote on that?
No, we're going to place, no, they don't, they don't have to, but what I think I am going to have to do is, that gateway is within the 100-foot buffer to the wetlands, and so I'm going to have to apply to the Conservation Commission to get approval for that. All of this has got a time crunch. This grant, all the money's supposed to be spent by the end of the fiscal year, by July 1. And so the pressure's on, on me to put these signs out to bid, hire someone to fabricate the signs. The DPW said that they can install the signs within the park. The signs that are going to go out on Route 1 are probably going to need to be, they'll need to be approved by the state and probably installed by the state. And these things will also trigger the need for a police detail, we're going to have to pay for that as well. So there's a number of details that I'm going to be involved with, working, you know, with the engineering department's been very helpful, working with Andy Murphy and Mark Ryan, and so they're going to work with me to, to get all this in place. At this point, this isn't really a planning project anymore, and we're, we're crossing the line over to implementation, and the town planner ordering street signs and trying to get them installed is more of a DPW function. And so I'm going to continue to talk to Mark Ryan about them, them continuing to help do that, and to the extent that they can just take, take a handoff on this, that would be great.
Just a question on the, on the highway signs, you have places to put those, and is that a, is that a difficult thing, another bureaucratic situation?
Well, you work for this state, Joe, you know what it's like. So, yes, yes, it is.
Different, totally different.
So, yeah.
They're all the same.
Andy Murphy's actually submitted an application to MassDOT, I think it's a Highway Access Permanent Application, which explains where we want to put these signs, how to, you know, copies of what we want the signs to say. So, so that, that's the first step forward. We had had a meeting with MassDOT back in January, and, and they were actually more helpful than we thought they were going to be, and it was a good meeting. So Andy's taken the, the first step to work with Mass Department of Transportation to get approval for those signs that, that are going to go on Route 1. So, simple, you know, simply put, if you're on Route 1, heading south, a half a mile before Moore Street Extension turn, which is the only access point to the park if you're headed south, because of the guard rail. The only way to get into Vanderbilt Park is through that Moore Street Extension, which is why the gateway sign's going there. So there'll be a sign that says Vanderbilt Park half mile ahead. So then when you get to the actual intersection, it'll say, right turn Vanderbilt Park, to have the same thing.
Or it's going to say Park Place.
Yeah, it'll say Park Place, and so there'll be the same thing coming north, the usual, here's a place coming up here in a half a mile, and then here's where it is.
And that has to be a standard?
Green state highway.
Okay, so.
We actually, they researched the font on that, and it's highway Gothic something font.
Okay, so when you say be attractive.
They made out of, made out of MDF.
What the hell is MDF?
Medium density foul, medium density fiber board, that's what the signs are made out of, just a little.
All right, so you say it's going to be attractive, that's a relative term. Who gets, who's picking this?
So, um, this is, this is something that we have worked with.
What?
Major stakeholders. So the major stakeholders here are Jim Shane and David Spiegel. They own, the two of them own the majority of the real estate in the park. They also had agreed to contribute to the project, $5,000 each. John Carroll asked them for a donation, because Mass Development said they like to see some donations from stakeholders. So they both agreed to do that. And so what we ended up with was this design.
Yes, thank you.
Which, which is like a, a blue background, there'll be a stainless steel mesh, where it's Park Place, will be placed on that, and then the blue pole is actually an LED wand that'll be illuminated at night, and that will help draw attention to the gateway sign, and that you're entering a different place, you know, Vanderbilt Park, Park Place.
We didn't try Steel Art by any chance, did we?
They contacted Steel Art, and Steel Art might be, we, we will ask Steel Art to submit a bid for that. So we do try to use local contractors whenever we can, and so I think they contacted us already, but when we put it out to bid, they will, we'll ask them if they're interested in, in fabricating the, the gateway sign.
Thank you.
Anything else on Park Place?
Just on the deadline, you think you will get there?
We're hoping to. It, some, I think the, the thing that's going to take the longest is if I have to file a full notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, that might delay it. But what this gateway sign, the way it will be mounted is two sonotubes in the ground, and then it'll bolt to it. So the footprint of impact in the buffer zone is.
What side is it going on?
Two sonotubes, it'll be on the right side of the road.
Is it going on the Honeydew side, or the?
Yes, on the Honeydew side.
On the Honeydew side?
Unfortunately, the other side of the street, underground, is all the switching equipment for the traffic signals on Route 1.
Oh.
And so there's way too much stuff underground. We actually had a gateway that was going to have something like that on both sides of the street, but unfortunately, there's a vault under there with all that switching equipment. We also, on, on the side, we're going to put it on, in addition to that ladder sign, there's like a Verizon box there as well. So it's a busy corner with a lot of infrastructure already below and above ground. We had Dan Morrissey from the Light Department meet us out there, he figured out how they will connect the electricity from the pole over to the existing ladder sign that's illuminated, there's a, there's a meter there, and Mr. Spiegel agreed to pay for the, the electricity coming off of that to illuminate the gateway.
I kind of thought they were going to do something like a stone with a, you know, like the, like the Marriott, like you. I kind of, I didn't kind of expect another pylon sign, I kind of expected more of a.
This will be a little different, and there is going to be substantial plantings all around it. Steve Cecil did a Way It's Gate Plan for it, so there's, there'll be plantings around that, and I asked Mr. Spiegel if he'd be willing to maintain those, and he said yes. So, yeah, that's what I was thinking this was going to go in, but it took a different direction, and part of it was what's on the ground there, with a lot of limiting factors.
Anything else on the sign? So you're going to go ahead with that? You want Patrick to work on that?
Yes, I just need the board to vote to approve changing more, the name Moore Street Extension to Park Place.
And do we need, that would obviously have to go through police and fire as well, right?
Yeah.
Before it's approved?
We'll run it by them, make sure they're okay with it.
Any, any, everybody knows why we're doing it?
Yeah, just one question, you, I think you talked about whether there was another street.
They'll check that out.
A park, they'll check that out, okay. But you, you lived here all your life, so you know that.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Is he dead?
I don't think there's another park.
So far, so.
There's a Park Street.
There's Park Street at the Norwood Bank.
Park Street.
Yeah, there is Park Street.
Not Park Place.
There is Park Street, see, there's like, there's two Talbots, one near me and one over here. I still don't know.
Okay, are you looking for motion?
I am looking for motion, if no one else says.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Okay, anything else on it? Seeing none, put it to vote, others in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, special town meeting articles, I think we have three articles that we are proposing?
Yes. From, I, I missed the last meeting, I understand from Pat, the minutes that the board voted to close the public hearing, but didn't vote to recommend approval of the articles. So we have this on the agenda for tonight, to have the board just vote to approve the, the articles as revised and submitted to the warrant.
All right.
I, I attended the selectmen's meeting last week, and they were discussing whether to support the articles and the warrant, and after a discussion on each one of the articles, I answered some questions, the board of selectmen unanimously voted to support all three of our zoning amendments.
I did have one question, I think Patrick answered it for me the other day. The first one, I can't, this one here, I don't know what article it'll be, but it's, has to do with notes to table of dimensional requirements, and we're changing density in districts A, C, B, H, B, L, B, and G, B. And the reason, there's no M, there's no residential component to any manufacturing districts, correct? That's why it's not, there's no, right, that's, there's no, there's no residential, there's no residential component to any manufacturing, limited or, or regular, right?
Correct.
All right, so they're there. Will this have any effect on what happens with the following amendment for the overlay district?
They're kind of companion articles where.
Because C, B is in here. This goes to the underlying district, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so why don't you just?
So, yeah, these two kind of go together, but they don't contradict one another.
Okay.
And Ted was the one that drafted that, and indicated that it would, the end result would be about 16 dwelling units per acre in these other commercial zoning districts.
Is this the one that's staying with zoning?
Yes, so this was what, what Phil Riley indicated when we met with the selectmen, he said, you know, we just wanted to have this footnote two change. And so after that meeting, we asked Ted to, to fix footnote two, and this was the solution that he came up with.
Can I ask another question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Homewood, by all means, we want you to be clear on this.
So, I got that. Tony Esco and Judith Howard's letter, and number five, on public benefits improvements used, the density bonus, yeah, one of your 9.4, 0.12 residential.
Okay, so before you go on, Mrs. Homewood, that has to do with the mixed overlay district, and we're not discussing that at this point.
We haven't gotten there?
No, we are on the density of the.
So we're going to move on from this one? Okay.
Yes, and then when we get to that, we'll enter that and we'll.
I'm premature.
Into that, yes. So, Rob, are you clear on, you know what we're doing here?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm pretty clear on it.
Okay, so the, the, just so we're, everyone knows, the central business district is, is nothing to do with the overlay district, they, I mean, they, one goes on top of the other, but the central business district is the current underlying zone that is currently on the books. And if, for whatever reason, the mixed use overlay fails, the central business district density, if, and this passes, this goes to the underlying district. So this will continue to, this will supersede what's currently on the books.
Right.
If I'm making myself clear. Okay. So any other questions on this article? At town meeting, and we'll make a, I don't, did we, Patrick, did we vote on this one to recommend? I thought we did on this one, to recommend, but if not, we.
We want to close the public hearing, but I think you initially wanted to have a recommendation to the.
All right, so we have to make a recommendation, again, as we're not, we're a non-binding group on this?
I'm sorry, I, I thought you were talking about this, you had mentioned.
Talking about the.
You did recommend.
All right, and so on this, on this particular article, however it comes up, we, we will make a recommendation, we voted at the last meeting, that we voted unanimously to recommend approval of this. So that's, that one's, we're all set on that one. So now we're going to move on to the second article, which you want to do mixed overlay next?
Yeah, so the, the actual order in the warrant is that the mixed use overlay district is going to be Article 5. The, the one we just discussed, the change to footnote two will be Article 6, and the open lot auto storage moratorium will be Article 7.
Okay, so 5, 6, and 7.
So, in, we received an email from Judith Howard and Tony Esco with some comments about the draft bylaw amendment, and I, I sent an email back to them responding to their comments. One of their comments suggested that in the section about density bonuses and providing public benefits, it listed that we would consult with the selectmen and, and some other departments about whether or not the town wants to accept these proposed public benefits. And they had suggested that the historic commission be listed as well. And so that seemed like a good idea, certainly reasonable, and so I did insert that into, into the bylaw, so that was one of their, their questions.
Thank you, Paul.
That's good.
Judith was also concerned about building height, and she expressed that at Thursday night's meeting, but the board did vote to increase the, the maximum height to 45 feet, which would allow for force, full stories. And Matt Walsh, the Assistant Building Inspector, had a way to determine building height so that we wouldn't have to, you know, do a.
Measure.
He had something more high-tech, that he shot the, the parapet of the Oddfellows Building, and he said that's about 43 feet high. So in our effort to try to keep, maintain about the same building height through the Washington Street District, you know, we've already verified that at least one of those buildings, you know, the highest elevation is 43 feet about. So we don't think the 45 feet is going to bloom large or cause any major issues of shadowing.
And that's throughout the entire district, 45 feet?
That's for, I think, along Washington Street.
And that was Washington and then 40 for the rest of the district, or was it 45?
It's actually specifically designed for the type of building, so it's for multifamily and for mixed use, but not for live workplaces or for townhouse style. That's kept at 35 feet.
Okay.
So it would be like Washington Street if it was going to be a mixed use building.
I would ask that we, the board, that we take the correspondence from Tony Esco and Judith Howard, and put it in the file, that we submit this as a, in, to the records.
Support document.
As a support document in the, in the file.
And as far as that goes, there's going to be a setback if it's over 35 feet, right? I mean, they're going to go back, they're going to push, step back.
Step back, on Washington.
Step back 10 feet on Washington Street.
And then on lower, it's 20 feet, or, yeah, it's, if you're down on lower day, it's different. Washington kind of has its own.
But that does make a big difference in the canyon effect.
Yes.
And the things that we worry about, whether it be losing light, having shadows, that kind of thing.
That was changed according to the board's vote.
Yes.
Yep. I'm excited, I think this is a great, it's a great thing.
We were pleased at the, at the discussion, the questions, and the outcome, and the turnout from our outreach meeting last Thursday, where we invited all of the town meeting members and the, and the town meeting members that were, were running for the position. We got about 40 people that attended, had some, some good questions and good discussion, and, and out of all those, all of that discussion, I did not hear any negative. Judith raised concerns about the, the height of the building, which we already knew she was concerned about, but we didn't hear anybody indicate that they, you know, didn't support it or were going to vote against it. So I'm cautiously optimistic we'll be successful at town meeting.
One thing about that meeting that I thought was really nice, for, as Debbie would say, those people in TV land, there were a lot of new faces. I would say half the room were people I've never seen before. You know, the old guard was there, and we wanted to continue that the concerned people would come out, but there were an awful lot of young, new people at that meeting that, that had questions, that supported it, there was one man there, I think he's going to be a new town meeting member, that's a, I think he said he was a player or something.
George.
A developer or something, and, and so I, I was very happy to see new people, young people.
Yep.
You know, taking an interest and coming out, and, and so just, that's just a comment on it. So is there any last minute questions on this mixed overlay before we take a vote to either recommend or not recommend at town meeting? Mrs. Homewood?
Who's pitching? You pitching?
Well, we're going to have.
Ted's pitching.
A, a, Ted is going to give a presentation, we'll have to time him. A, a, um, Ted is gonna give a presentation. We'll have to time him, 'cause he's got a, like a 30-slide presentation.
The same one that we've done at the Pacific?
Pretty much.
Yeah, so I, I told Ted that we'd have this discussion tonight, and see what the board wanted to do, whether they wanted me to do it, or we want Ted to do it. And I'm, I'm, he's done a great job so far, so I'm fine with that. Um, uh, we have five minutes for presentation?
I think you have 20.
You have 20.
20 total.
Five to speak.
Okay, so, um-
Well, you may have to ask for extra time.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I, I, I don't wanna have, I don't wanna use the presentations that he's done. I, we will pull some slides out. So, um, um, we're, we are working with him now to put together the PowerPoint presentation. We've gotta deliver it, um, upstairs so that it can be mounted in with all the other presentations. Um, but you'll, it'll be, um, pretty much all of the same slides that you've seen, only we'll, we'll pull some out to try to shorten the presentation. So we just focus on the main points of the bylaw amendment.
Yeah, I think we have Ted do it, and then, uh, you know, Paul, and I, I might say a couple, yeah, I say it every ti- every one of these things. I, I'm fired up about this thing. I, 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 I think we're way overdue here. I, we had, we should've done it years ago, just like the CPA, but that's another issue. Um, but yeah, if Ted is available, definitely. But I think you gotta work with him, and, uh, we've gotta get him a microphone and get him a pointer, and, and, uh, I think he does a good job, and, and, um, I think he brings some, some points from a planner's point of view. Uh, so what, yes, Debbie?
One of the points that, that I think, you know, the density thing, the density thing, but when we got the figures that the, the Guile, the, what's around building on the corner?
Guile Building, Talbot Building, the Talbot Building.
And, and it was 78?
81.
81, I mean, I was like, wow.
Units per acre, yeah.
I mean, I-
Those are the hardest things for people to get.
Right, but I think that's something that gives them a, you know, gives those of us a reference for, okay, well, alright, now we're only go- I think people need that. I think sometimes we forget that we do this ad nauseam. And, you know, it sounds really dense, like you said about a piece of land, but if you look at the Guile Building, and that's 81, and we're only-
You can't look at your own yard.
I understand that, but that's what they're gonna do, so let's give them something that's actually a reference. Kinda like that car dealer thing, which I'm still passing out.
That and all abouties was a good choice, too.
And, and to elaborate on that, we've continued to do research, talking about other communities. Um, Matt Smith from Norwood Engineering has been working on a project in, in Dedham Square. And we asked him, you know, what the density was that was a lot there, and, and the, the answer was about 57 units per acre. I was at a meeting, um, at the end of last week, and, and I ran into, um, um, the planner from Milton that I know. And we talked about this, and he said, yeah, we've got one of these projects, and, and the density range was somewhere between like 40 and 51 units per acre in Milton. So this is what we've been watching happening in other towns, and we've now got some data to support just what that density is to compare to the, the 30 units per acre that, that we're proposing. And so I'm fairly comfortable that this is not gonna be, um, a major issue for our downtown, and that we've now provided enough density to make it worthwhile for a property owner to take a risk and, and to undertake a project.
But did you know that that was, that there was a project in Dedham that was, what'd you say, 50?
Yeah.
57? Did you know that six, three months ago?
No, we just found that out last week.
Okay, so those, those of us at town meeting that are gonna vote on this, I think that would be a really helpful information, because how else are they gonna get it? They're gonna call the town planner in Dedham and say, what's your density in Dedham?
That's why we've been doing this research, trying to get more information.
I think we're prepared.
That research knowledge is a good thing for them to have.
I think Paul made a good point at that meeting the other night. This plan is so different, so more involved, so more comprehensive than what we proposed years ago.
Mm-huh.
And, and, uh, and I think the town, my own gut is, we're gonna have some pushback on, on the density, and, you know, and there are gonna be people that say apartments, no, 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 no. I, I just think we're ready for this. And I think that, I think that some of the, the new blood in town, and they, they get it, and they, uh-
That other plan shouldn't have gone through, it wasn't thought out.
We have a, Mr. Maloney, you have anything else to, do you wanna chime in on any, on any subject here tonight? Where we are, oh, okay.
No, I, I think, I think you're doing a great job. But the, we did, uh, we were enthusiastic, the board was enthusiastic about, about the mixed-use overlay district. Uh, that was clear, and the relaxation of the footnote, uh, as well. And you haven't talked about the third one yet, you will, but no, this, this is a good thing. We're also, by the way, capital outlay, and as you know,
Yep.
did, did endorse, and Finance Commission also endorsed tonight, among capital projects for next year, the $950,000 estimated cost for five, uh, the, the resurfacing of five parking lots in the central business district. So it's a, it's a way by which the town is showing that it wants to contribute to the enrichment and the re, rehabilitation of, of the central business district as well, so. No, I think we're on track. I'm, I'm looking forward to town meeting, I'm looking forward to bringing this, and I think, uh, Ted, Paul, and the board, you're gonna do a great job with it.
Just, uh, another point to make sure is that these aren't necessarily all rentals, that there are, there could be ownership opportunities, too. I think, I think that's an important point to make.
Yeah, we, you know, unfortunately, we can't regulate, um, whether something is a rental or an ownership, an apartment or condo.
No, but we wanna make sure that, that option's out there, and everyone shouldn't take for granted that it, it's gonna be, there're gonna be rentals.
There are all gonna be apartments.
And there, there could be some, there's ownership opportunities.
It's really up to the developer at that point what he wants to put in there. Uh, you know, I mean, he, and then it's up to the, the board, you know, Approve the permit. Alright, so anything else on this?
Well, as you've talked about, and, and I find it very difficult that we keep talking up the town of Dedham for their center, and Islington for their center. It's hard time to do it here.
Exactly.
I mean, I tried the Horse Thieves new restaurant in Dedham Square the other night.
Oh, I know, yes.
What's the name of it?
Horse Thieves.
Horse Thieves.
They don't serve horse meat, do they?
They do.
They do.
Ground horse meat, yeah, you can have it medium or rare. And, um, but it was very, very loud, but the food was exceptional.
Alright, there you go. An unbiased, uh-
And a second location formerly where Isabelle's was across the street.
Oh.
It's a new spot called Tremesso. They have a location in Wilmington. And this is, it's a very fine Italian, not fine dining, but a fine Italian.
Now, I haven't been through in a while.
Right here at the Phantom Gourmet of Norwood.
Is the old Norwood Messenger Building is now apartments as well, isn't it? I believe it is, the old messenger building. When you're coming in from Islington, when you're coming into Dedham.
Dear God, now you're giving us Dedham history?
They got the, the big old brown building on the right, right before you hit the square.
Yes.
Before you hit the pylon, those, you know, hit your car right into the pylon, those, the, what, like, why did they put it there? I'll never know, but that's okay.
Yes, it is.
That's, I think the old Norwood Messenger Building. Alright, um, so what I'm looking for is a, uh, motion to rec, uh, for recommendation at town meeting for, uh, approval of Article-
One at a time or all three?
Uh, no, this is just for this one, mixed overlay, mixed overlay.
We voted the first one.
We already, we voted the last meeting to recommend the first one.
Okay.
So this is for the mixed overlay. We looking for a motion for recommendation?
Give the assistant, go ahead now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, recommend to town meeting the overlay district, mixed-use overlay district, as submitted by the town planner and Economic Development.
Second.
Okay, anything else on it?
Yeah, I have another question.
Okay, Mrs. Homewood.
This is about the 10th copy we have of this. Anything changed in it?
So this is the final version, um, it's version 5.
Alright, I intend-
The heights are in there.
But, you know, your point well taken. It is version 5, and it incorporated the changes that the board voted last Thursday night.
Which is heightened density.
Heightened density, um, it might've been something else, but, uh, yes.
So this is the last one, and it went to the printer, or the whatever they call it.
Yes, yes.
So, okay, that's it.
Any other discussions? Seeing none, put a vote. All those in favor of, of recommendation or approval?
You did second, okay.
Yep. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Good.
Vote to recommend, unanimous vote to recommend. Okay, and the third and final is the moratorium on open lots, motor vehicle open lot storage. And, Mr. Halkeotos, I meant to call you, because after I talked to you on Friday, I went to Duncan Donuts, and I just wanna run this by you.
Which one?
The one next to the police station. And I heard loud engines running. And I looked up, and of, for a hundred years there, there's been a boat storage place, you know, on the other side of Dunn's Bond. And they were revving up the motors on the boats, getting them ready to take you fishing.
Tide must've been pretty high to get them all the way in.
Where, where do we have, or do we have, would that be considered?
Open lot storage.
Open lot storage. I mean, how does that fit into the, we talked about changing the wording to motor vehicle, and, I mean, I, I, and it just struck me, I heard this loud engine run, and I looked over, and they're working on the boats.
So I think there's a definition that's actually in the article, and I don't have the article with me.
And I just don't know if that's allowed in, allowed as open lot storage?
Definition, open lot motor vehicle storage, the storage of any kind of unregistered motor vehicle on a lot where no sales are made, open to the air, and not within a weather-type building or structure. And I think this may be in the zoning bylaw already, this definition, 'cause it's, it's not necessarily the way I would've, I don't think I would've written it that way. So that is how we define it. So, um, technically, if there was a lot with boats that were unregistered, and, um, they're on a lot where no sales are taking place, and open to the air, not in a building, they would be overlot storage.
That would, that would fall under the, so somebody could say, I wanna park campers or boats and-
Yeah. Um, but what we, what I've seen is, um, um, boats are stored oftentimes in a rack storage system. Um, and I've had to deal with this, working for coastal towns for all my career. Um, boat storage and parking for people that are launching their boats from marinas is a real problem. There's, there's always not enough land on the coast to accommodate all the boats that a marina might, might have coming and going, and, and the people that are parking the cars and going, setting off to sea. Um, so we, I've seen rack storage in other places, and, and I actually, I talked to David Spiegel about that, um,
I'd be curious to see what, if that, I mean, it's been there forever, as long as I can remember that's been there. So I'd be curious to see what, what kind of permit or anything they have for, you know, storing. There, I'm sure they're registered boats, you know, and they're, they're shrink-wrapped and all of that.